The honorable member representing the African National House of Representatives. So I'm here this afternoon for me to do my report card for the past one year. Because you know, we've done one year on the 13th of this month. This is after we returned National House of Representatives. So the essence of our coming here today is for us to be, to have interaction with my constituents.
Okay.
And let me also add that this event was also supported by Yaga Africa. One of the major for democracy NGO over to Nigeria and all Africa.
Okay, I'll give you the report card.
The expectation is, um, I want, I want to have the feel, I want to have a direct contact engagement with my constituents. I want to know how they are feeling, I want to know the things. Even though I've, from time to time, I have carried, you know, these assessments. But it's not everybody that is here now that I have had the opportunity to have a direct contact with me. That is why we have invited all the critical stakeholders, starting from market women, Okaada riders, KKR riders, teachers, religious people, party stakeholders. And then everybody across the, you know, the go length and breadth of Agatha Federal constituency.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Honorable Engineer Dominic Okapo. By his presence, the honorable member representing African National House of Representatives. Why we're here today is for me to have an engagement, direct engagement with my constituents. Instead of talking about it, for me to talk like assumptions. I don't want reporter's speech, I wanted to hear from my boss, hear from the boss's voice, this is mine. And then of course, I also hear their concerns. It will help me to give them a better, effective presentation at the National House of Representatives.
So I just want you to know what I would do.
I booked a couple of views, I sponsored a couple of views. I also wrote a couple of motions. The first one that is very important to me, very dear to my heart, is the motion on refugee, like, Goli erosion in Agatha Federal constituency. I tell you, I want to, all the 14 communities who have in Agatha Federal constituency, that should all of them have one or two more erosion signs. That's why really, after we were inaugurated in June, June 13th precisely, employment July, I moved the motions on the need for the federal governments of various entities of government to come to the aid of Agatha Federal constituency. To see how to, you know, check the menace over Goli erosion. And let me also add that that motion has also, um, that there was already public carry on that motion, which was to a lot of people from Nigeria, who's concerned to ask. And this was paid attention from diverse entities of government, even from government that sees the ecological form.
Okay, sir, what are the results?
What takes, also you know, the 24 budget which is still running, is currently going through, running over streets. But I want, I want to bring a lot of different democracies in the area of education, area of health, area of agriculture. Very importantly, for youths and the people that are in education, they go to the arts. Through the last morning, we, uh, we did a lot of groups and many programs that saw a lot of women got these skills and also gave them some grants, kind of sort of grants. And I'm very happy for it.
Thank you very much, sir. My name is Dominic, is a chairman, fellow, I guess, of the House Committee, and then the legislature. Chairman, I do have no way, thank you. Thank you very much.
As you told of, Ashina. As you told of, Ashina, representing as you do at the top. The clergy led by Muslims, Puni and Peter, who were ovulating, Bishop of Uglod, Aktion of Trade in One Solar Light. On the 19th of August 2023, he also facilitated a skill acquisition training and empowerment for cooperative women in Agatha. In conjunction with Federal Cooperative College of Jureva in Ugu State, and empowered them with a take-off grant. On the 8th, he facilitated the supply and distribution of young siblings to cooperative men and women in Agatha with assistance. On the 16th of September, in his pragmatic approach to the plight of his constituents, he facilitated the inspection of energy, erosion gardens in Agatha communities. In readiness, federal government intervention. Honorable Uji Adomino Okapo, the leader of Nigeria Society of Engineers, he is a member of Agatha Committee investigating the raw industries, department, and agency, rooted payroll, and parcel information system, IDPIS. Uji Adom Okapo is the chairman of Nigerian Norway Friendship Committee and deputy chairman. Committee on the Legitimate Legislative, it is important, and a member of numerous standing committee with these giant developmental strikes. Still in office, has shown another batch of Agatha needs, nice city digital skills. He puts second batch of 50 cooperative women in various vocational skills, and empowering saying with a take-off grant. Honorable, emotion, and the need for government, they will need their states at. Honorable Don Okapo, one year in office, scorecard. Scorecard is going to be delivered to the member representing Agatha Federal constituency, Honorable Don, Engineer Honorable Don Okapo. He's going to be interacting with his constituents on this day, 38th of June 2024. Green Papa Never Comes live on this event, you are watching on planet. Honorable Charles, isn't like that. He's a governor of Anambra State, Professor Charles, this is Charles of Ashina. And the one-two chairman of Ashina, Apuga. So that we start, meanwhile, wherever you find yourself today, you are a special person. At this moment, let me recognize and welcome to the high temperature Professor Phil, Phil Eze. Please, may we put our hands together for him? Yes. Uh, obviously, I'm gonna, ever gonna, only not at all. They can, honorable Chief Jude Osude, honorable. Christian Okongwa, Eze Banabo. Biko na kona, kadi ka na, puti woloje. Yes, a chile logo. Only see na, ye ni nozani luku, na House of Friends. Abu Makawde, Mama Gwata, ona gane kere nde mado. Yes. Biko na kona, kadi ka na, Bata. Na kona, kadi ka na, Bata. Yes. They call they. Over they kere nde, for Makwata, no so di chiche. When they want, they kere mani we, oh, they kere noya okona, oh, they kere di biji. Oh, they kere noya okona, no, me na so yotso. Oh, si mila ta yonwa, oh, na, 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 Gwata. Yes. That's the champion. Eh, biko, amam na, kere, kwezo, na, 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 na. Uh-huh, wuwa, woloje. Iga, ma lije. Eh, biko, deka, deka, ayine, water, Iga, Adazini Rup, we go, national anthem. After the national anthem, Anambra anthem, after that, then we do the opening prayer. Then, Anambra, Anambra anthem. Federal constituency, and our friends, Nakor, Weyke Ente. Okapo is the chairman of Nigerian Norway Friendship Committee. Bo Okapo, as a chiney luko, kaye ni akarya, kosi weyderia na Abuja, for the past one year. I weyde kene chuku, makro heredi utwa, weena yo, kungozi chuku, koda pasea, no so pruiche. Kowe na, nochita anya, ofuma, weena ebek ifediara, emwa, kaye wa bunda, na, na, nochita anya, kaye bokon gole ni, kuwa do, kwestri na, eh, eh. Kaye na, Jesus Christ, gole wa. Amen. Biko, she fight to Sanikogo, Ugunba Agwata, please, may we put our hands together as it's coming to. Chele, Eze Mugo, he is the chairman, Agatha Traditional Alliance Council. Biko, Tony, we, Ogo, who be of for, yak, ayne kene ya. At the same time, let us also recognize the presence of the chairman, Anambra South Traditional Alliance Council. The entire seven local governments in Anambra South is in charge of the activities of the where, his royal highness, he were called, Ochi. As you got up, biko, Tony, we, as you got up, ayne kene ya. My name is Eze, as you got up. Let us also go to recognize the former chairman of Agatha Traditional Alliance Council, his royal highness. He were applicant, operator, in Namotshimi, Gago, in Namotshimi, Agatha. Biko, to party, we, his royal highness, he were, Tony, and operator, Eze Chak. Uh, it's also one of the persons that is helping the government of Anambra State to reach the goals. Thank you very much. Uh, we also recognize all the presidents of all the, yes, the. Eh, ayaka seli rune me ifedi nochi, eh, ayane kene, one de mada, makanata, we go, odiro. Biko, as na, eh, odiro, tigi si well, Anambra, eh, blodikade, we yete. Chairman of the council, Obunyendegota. Agatha Bueno, Agatha Bueno, Agatha Weso. Eh, apora, you kupuri kita. Ne jiko si, na, na, bataray noku, nuwa isar. Asuora, yo, je. Go di du, ayne asya, 12th of September, asya odiya, oda di, we. Agatha Bueno, Agatha Bueno, we ayen, we nochi. Eh, we nochi. Hey, hey, what is it? What is it? Woki we, woki we. Be ka, ayala ebo niyata. Kasi so, Jutona, Ezell Fana, be kosi fe roje. Uh, yes, the chairman of the occasion. Yes, be ka, Kaze, Nyukwa, uh, deka, Nyukwa, Aguaata. Then, the chairman of all progressive land lawyers, Abda. Oh, na pati ye, buka le, be kasi, abuja, ya we de representar of mine. So, but it's very important. Then, I ne, beni biji is not. I ne, Igwe, Konelsi, Ebo Moalo, Isu, Kisoja, I nasia, not, toka Igwe. Yes, be ka, Ika se beni biji no, a biji applause on everyone. He's a Tony, Kesa Maka, Bijia, General, on everyone. Mister Ghebat, the Biakon, Vice President General, Romana, Onia. Engineer, Fidelis, Okafor. Bo, Biji, Isofya, Onia. Sam, Doctor, MCK, Oban. Ez, uh huh, be kongwe biji was on everyone. All right. Okay, Biji, Ikenga. Ya, be ka, bo dali oje. Uh huh. All right, be ka, deka muana, Abo Dumi. Abo, eweleko, Juke, eweleko, Athena, eweleko, Omoana, eweleko, Wuwu, eweleko, Isofya, eweleko, Ikenga, eweleko. Abo Moana, eweleko. Be ka, Omoaian communities, in those of my world, Ezell, lift it, have a large hands. Um ba, Igwe, weledeki Igwe. I na pasimi biji, obunina, mati ta, amao, o, tebe, Igwe, obiha, o niye. Abo, we lift it. Then, abo, we lift it, welelu. Abu, we lift it, be ka, Omoa, Oda, Amma, Salimiti, Ne, Pati, Ola, Oda. On, be che tera, be no, amna, abo. Uh huh, Umuju. Onyu muju. Obole, bole, na, ama, abo, be no. Mbolebu. Mbolebu. Ahmed. Aguaata Weso. Isu, Isu. Idu. Na woche. Obioga. Asie ne kene, goya, go, no, no. Oba, eba, Tata.